All, please.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitan. Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Knight.
I need a motion to prove minutes from June 12th, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to invite Chris Kane. He's Addison Township Assessor. That he came out today to explain somewhat the phone calls that some of our Aldermen have been receiving about how the property tax went up so high. So, Chris, if you mind there or wherever you like, it doesn't matter. If you just...
That's fine.
Okay. He will be short and sweet because he needs to get to another meeting. So, he's got like 20 minutes. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, real good. Well, first of all, thanks for having me out. Having the assessor at your meeting obviously starts you out a little bit with a little bit of a depressing mood. But let me try to clarify a few things that will help you speak to the residents of Wooddale and your constituents. Give them a better thorough explanation of what's taking place. And then naturally, it's still property tax, so we will not necessarily have made them happy, but we will keep them informed and guide them through a process of knowledge. And then if they still have a dispute, where they can go to get that resolved. First and foremost, this was the year you got probably the highest amount of phone calls regarding property taxes that you can remember in recent times. This year that we completed was our general reassessment year. That's when under statute, we're required to go in and revalue all the properties in the township, re-update those assessments as close to the current market value, and then go ahead and place those on the rolls for the treasurer and clerk to then use for the taxing bodies. A lot of people said, "How can that happen? 2007, the market was crazy. You know, we got all kinds of problems and the market is nowhere where it was before." And some of what they bring up is legitimate. But the one thing that we were doing, and in the tax cycle, is the general reassessment year is valued as of 1-1-2007. And based on that, we're restricted into the information and data we can utilize to even develop the assessments. That means we use, under the state statute again, a three-year sales analysis. They call it a three-year weighted sales ratio study. But that took in basically the activity of 2006, 2005, and 2004. We're actually prohibited from looking at sales at that point into 2007. We take those numbers throughout. As we conclude, we work through the first quarter into the second quarter of 2007, interpreting that data, revaluing our neighborhoods, and basically trying to just, from a numerical standpoint, look at, here's all the sales that have occurred. Here is where we're at with our neighborhoods and values, and bringing those up current. We finalized those in September of '07, and turned those over then basically to DuPage County to set up the ability for your appeal process and basically final certification of those numbers. So, all the finance managers and all the different government taxing bodies could get out there and start developing what kind of revenue would be made available to them through the system. The appeal process took place till about the end of December. And that's people protesting, A, because they may have had their own personal recent sale on the property. There may have been discrepancies in the physical characteristics of the property. Some of them just wanted to go through the motions and go ahead and appeal. But based on the merits of sales activity or comparable properties, 2006 and the other two years prior. When people would come to us with information on 2007, basically that's something we can take and look at and put aside and start to review for our 2008 assessments. That process was concluded. And then in the basic first quarter of this year is when they finalized any adjustments they were going to make to the assessments. All the appeals were closed out. And then the clerk made ready the assessed valuation rolls for everybody to go in and take their, basically their portions for distribution. At that point is when the activity in the newspapers takes place. Is, you know, they're out in April. You guys are passing your budgets. We're passing budgets. The schools are passing budgets. And the word comes out that the tax bills are finally coming in the mail. Those were sent out at the beginning of April and, I think, actually mid-April. And then the first installment due the beginning of June, and the second installment due at the beginning of September. So, what actually happens is, is this entire process takes place before the tax bill ever comes out. Some people then look at the tax bill, and now they want to go back in and take it to where we were in the appeal point. And unfortunately, at that point timelines have passed. And it's set up that way so that the distribution of funds can take place in a timely manner without it being continuously complicated through the process of appeal. That's kind of a brief summation of what took place. Once again, that was our general reassessment year. We were forced to react to the extraordinary amount of sales activity in 2004, 2005, 2006. Actually, even as we closed out 2007, we found an extreme leveling off of sales and the values that they were collecting from 2006 into 2007. And we found the amount of sales dropped dramatically in the township as well as in DuPage County. I mean, down 40, 50 percent. But the DuPage Association of Realtors was still posting a 1.2 percent gain in the property values overall in DuPage County through the three quarters of 2007. So, here, we're, I'm looking at stuff in the paper every day like anybody else. And we're taking in all this change that's taking place. And certainly, the economic situation has absolutely bottomed out. And we have homes in foreclosure, and we have all kinds of complicated measures now as a result of what took place in those prior three years. And we still wind up seeing that there's a very, very light appreciation in property. Still, I would consider that static, but an unbelievable statistic at the end. The fourth quarter of 2007 was the first time there was actually a negative trending in the sales prices throughout DuPage, some of which we were able to see here in the township. Completing the general reassessment, this is kind of where we had to bite the bullet. We had to basically, we're the, actually, I use the analogy, we were the end car in the roller coaster. The real estate market was going out of control on the most unbelievable ride ever. And the whole system's set up so that we're not actually chasing sales that immediate. It's always designed to kind of buffer the increases in a market so they're more stabilized. Nothing's really prepared in what the state puts together to handle basically the runaway housing market that took place. So, we now have the first car already peaked, starting to go down on the roller coaster. And the assessment process is the back of the car, and we're still going over the top to come down as well. We're always looking at sales that are years prior, and we're reacting to that stuff, trying to move forward. The end result of where we're sitting kind of right now, or what does that mean to all of us as homeowners? What does that mean to the Wooddale? What does that mean to any of our other taxing bodies? Is, is we've kind of absorbed that pass-through cost and that adjustment to property. There are no huge increases forthcoming to any neighborhoods in Addison Township. Our overall analysis is not to change assessments upward, really in any way, shape, or form, in any type of our property classes, specifically kind of looking at Wooddale here as we're starting to look at our numbers. People have asked of, "Well, my property's worth less. Should my assessment be cut down and thus my taxes become lower?" And there's a couple answers to that. First and foremost is, we're still reacting to sales data. Some of it is 2008 sales data. That has some trending that the market is legitimately down. And we have resales now that will indicate that homes have dropped 40,000, 50,000. We've all heard of the homes where now people are not getting or listing for what they did prior. But we're also finding that the market time is up, and then people are pulling them off the market rather than accept that loss. And so, till these sales kind of go through our hands, once again, are aware of the environment, but they're tied to some extent. What we find once again with that is 2008 activity. Our 2007 was static and slow for most of, actually through probably September 2007. And so, when we closed to finalize our numbers now, we're 1-1 of '08, unable to look at our 2008 sales. But we are flat and static with what we intend on doing as far as making any additional adjustments into the assessments. And certainly, they won't be in an upward direction. The second part of that is, is, well, then taxes should go down, right? Everybody says they should go down. My home's worth less, taxes should go down. And the answer to that is, realistically, the taxes do not go down. And that could be if today we said, "You know what? This market's bad. I'm going to cut the assessments across the board 50 percent." All assessments, all properties are now valued in half. Everybody's, "Wow, this value's great. This is phenomenal. This is, this is okay. This is perfect." The tax bill's going to come, and you're going to get a tax bill with probably a $100 increase. Maybe $150, maybe $75, somewhere in between there. And the main reason is, is in DuPage County, property taxes is utilized to fund our education system primarily. All our units of government utilize property taxes, but 73 percent basically of our tax bill goes into our school system. And the school systems, simply by reducing the assessment, have their budgetary needs, and they have their limited resources outside of property taxes to provide the education. And so, they simply would need to adjust their rates so that they would become higher so they could extract their same monies out. They're limited on how much they can take them upward, but they would always get that same amount of money. And they would just be dividing into less of assessment for that. They would just bring the rate up. The problem with the property tax system is the burden that it does place on the homeowners. And it does. And once again, it's the dependency for our education system to go ahead and need this money to operate. That's based on unequal funding from our state system, from the income tax and taxes and revenues that they garner and make available into their general education fund for DuPage County. Every dollar we give to the state, I hear varying numbers, but it's somewhere between 41 cents and 14 cents that we actually get back. So, we're always chasing to make up that money to begin with. We're always out of pocket at least 60 cents. And that money has to wind up coming out of pocket, and we kind of have to self-fund that. They use this formula specifically for that. And I talk specifically about the education system because it's the major, and it's the huge portion of the real estate tax system. Every other unit of government can kind of take themselves off property taxes, and the tax bills overall will probably go down $700 on average because the schools would still be on there. This is what the, and that's their primary funding overall. So, cutting the assessments down and just taking everything down doesn't absolutely then have an effect of actually lowering the taxes. And that's where the misconception is with that. It will, however, like I say, with the general reassessment being completed, we have now hit tax stability again. I don't know if that's me that's making that noise. Or that's just the air kicking out. Okay. But that is part of the fundamental situation we're in in DuPage County. That's one of the reasons many people come to DuPage County and initially started this real estate market. Was for the school systems, was for the quality of life, was for the services your municipality provides, for the services DuPage County provides, for your park districts and so forth. And it's all kind of bundled in and dependent on the real estate assessment for those taxes. That's kind of just a quick summation on everything. I'm sure you have a few questions, so I'd be more than happy to take those.
I have one question first. The, so more or less, you won't assess the houses for another three years, then?
We're required to do it at least once every four years. And in a general reassessment, every property has to be revalued.
Okay.
We're continuously monitoring areas and attempting to make adjustments specifically if we can track and trend that. The case has been up through now is where you have property values escalating at double-digit rates. Models aren't really designed to go ahead and take a home, and it's 200,000, now it's 315, now it's 410 in a three-year period. It's based more on a little bit more of a progressive pass-through on that. When we identify neighborhoods, though, that are jumping and trending at a higher level, we will go in and modify that because otherwise, we're going to have a discrepancy far greater than even the circumstances you've heard from individuals in the city.
Sure.
Did you say then that out of our tax bill, for the money that goes to the schools, it goes to Springfield, and they send back a maximum of 41 cents for each dollar you send to Springfield?
Talking to the legislators and talking to different, basically, finance persons from the state side forward, I have heard the answer is low as 14 cents, somewhere in 41 cents. They don't actually have a concrete number. That's the number I hear consistently from different entities throughout. And it's never been quoted higher than 41 cents back on the dollar. And, you know, they make comments from time to time with, "Well, we're going to do this, and DuPage will pay for it." A lot of our money goes in to fund the Chicago Public School System. Their economic draw is greater than what they produce revenue-wise, and so, they are underfunded. They get a disproportionate amount of money back. They're getting at least, I believe, a dollar 25 for every dollar that they contribute back from the state into that system. So, we are paying that draw.
Mr. Lewitan.
Mr. Kane. My question, I have a question, but then I have a question on the subjects that we've been talking about. Is that 20 years ago, I heard that when we, as a state, initiated gambling revenue, that that gambling revenue would be sequestered solely for schools. But the money, it seems like, that we had for schools from taxes has been shifted so that while the gambling revenue is going to the schools, the base that the schools were at shrunk, so the schools aren't getting any more money. They're not benefiting at all from the taxes, from the gambling. Instead, what it is, is that the money that used to go to schools, that wasn't gambling money, was shifted by the governors to other uses. Is that true?
I couldn't comment on it specifically because I don't handle that. That would be my perception, though, as well. That would be my interpretation of that. These funds, once again, and a lot of it is redistributed back into the Cook County area. Our dollars are needed to help fund those areas. And then we also have to make up that shortfall. That's why our schools are so dependent on it. What I have brought for you, which I will pass out, and this is the breakdown of where these real estate taxes go to. And you can just see, and this, you know, four or five years ago, the schools were 68 percent. Still very significant, but they are on the verge of becoming 75 percent of our real estate taxes. And this is their economic survival is based on our taxes that we pay through real estate. The talk about alternative tax swapping, using more on the income tax, and then taking some of the load off the real estate tax, sounds very popular. I certainly would love it. It would make my job 100 percent easier. The reality would be is, that's more money that we're going to distribute to Springfield to be redistributed. I am, I'm pretty comfortable saying I don't believe we will get our dollar-for-dollar back. And then, I believe the low would inadvertently still come back onto the real estate taxes again. And five years after we did it, we'd be paying the same real estate tax as a higher income tax and actually still struggling to find the correct revenues that we were promised from the get-go.
When you said to Alderman Shawkey that we're getting back 14 to 41 cents on the dollar, I'm asking this, did I misunderstand it? You're talking about state taxes. When I look at the bill, or we all look at our bill from our real estate, and it says that the elementary schools receive so much money from the taxes, all that money is going to the schools?
Yeah, correct. Everything on the tax bill itself, it's locally collected and locally distributed. That's our self-funding there. That is the benefit to real estate taxes. There are downsides, of course, in the fact that it's distributed that way. People that utilize the school systems don't necessarily also have homeownership and are not taxed that same way. But what it does do is, it takes it locally within this community, in this school district, and they can take the revenues from that district and collect them right back. It doesn't go up where another layer of bureaucracy or interpretation of what the correct funding levels are should be. It's right back in. That's what we've done. That's one of the reasons we pay the higher tax bill.
Mr. Coles.
Mr. Kane, I got a question. I have a gentleman that has a woodshed. And he, it was assessed on his real estate tax. And he has decided not to use his fireplace anymore because he's going, he's going to go green instead of having the smoke going out into the air. And he's going to remove this. Now, who do I send him to to get this shed taken off his real estate tax?
Is it a shed or is it the fireplace?
It's a shed.
Okay.
It's a shed where he keeps the dry wood.
Okay.
For his fireplace.
Okay, so he's, okay.
And it's been, it's been put on his real estate tax bill as a shed in his, in his, when he gets a, he got a letter on it saying that it's being on his tax bill. Now, how does he get that off?
There will be two things. First and foremost, I assume he would check with your building and zoning department to make sure that the demolition taking place meets your code. More than likely, a permit of some sort will be generated as a result of that basic destruction that takes place. If that's the case, we'll get notification that there's going to be a change on the property, and we will also go out in a timely manner and inspect it as well. And once it's down, go ahead and remove that from there. The other thing would be is, you can certainly call our office once it's down. Once it's down and say, "You know, this is down. Did you get the permit on it? Or the city said, 'I don't have a permit on this. Want to make you aware of it. Can you update my physical data so that it's complete and accurate?'" And we'll go ahead then and change it. So, it'll be one of the two ways.
Okay, thank you very much.
Last question, if I may.
Sure.
Mansionization. You've mentioned before, or I've heard said, that if we have a tear-down in the, in an area where it's all ranch houses and they put up this three-story building, that they get a cut on their taxes.
Well, it's broad as, oh, that's a cut on the taxes, or that's a change in the value. And what I've explained is, when you have the first few homes, and I'll use the tear-downs, that go up, and the other ranches, let's say, are 1,200 square feet, they're 40 years old, you know, they're just frame buildings, and all of a sudden, you now have a 5,000-square-foot, all brick, full brick driveway, you know, basically an incredible residence. The assessment on that is going to represent that square footage and those property characteristics. But when it comes to determining the actual market value, one of the real estate fundamentals that would apply is that that particular home will have a lesser value than it would if it were in a neighborhood already established with like homes. I use the example of Woodbine. If I take a home out of Woodbine and put it into that neighborhood, what they're going to be able to pay, what they're, excuse me, what they're going to be able to purchase that home for out of the Woodbine area will wind up being lower than when it's in there in the same category. The reverse also would take place. If you took one of these ranches and stuck it on one empty lot in the middle of Woodbine, and you have all your more upper-scale homes there, the value of that home will be worth more than it would be in its same neighborhood, just as a result of the neighborhood and the difference in land value. And that's going to be a piece of that equation. So, it's not necessarily a tax break, but they have built a home that hasn't really been potentially utilized in its highest and best use because it's not in the neighborhood that's going to maximize that investment for them.
Any other questions?
Iris King, I thank you for coming out tonight. I think you answered quite a few questions, and I think we...
Great. And in closing, I'll just leave you with a little bit of a good note. And that is, just real quickly, we are working on a couple things we think may be beneficial to our residents here in DuPage County, Addison Township, as well as the state of Illinois, working. And reaching out to the legislators, A, to ask that the senior exemption eligibility age be modified downward. It's currently at 65. I'd like to see it somewhere around 62, 62 and a half so that, you know, retired seniors at this point can actually enter eligibility a little bit earlier. We're asking that the sales ratio study that I speak about has a default provision in the revenue code so that it's instead of three years weighted, it's the one year prior and default to whichever is less. That's more of a technical one, but also beneficial to the residents. And then the third project I am also advocating for is basically a residential homeowner's exemption stimulus where they would go ahead and bump up our homeowner's exemption on a one-time basis or a two-year basis to a higher level. That would be legitimate savings and a pass-through cost. So, I am working on that. Those details are sketchy as they continue to work on our own budget problems, but we are trying to add some solutions into the whole process. And on that, I thank everybody for inviting me out. Love to do it again sometime, and thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Okay. Reporting and recommendation, water rate billing analysis. I believe Maggie and Brad has a presentation. This has been going on for, it's been put on hold for a while because other things came up. So, I will turn it over to Maggie. You guys all should have got a handout of her PowerPoint for today. Everyone get it? Okay. Maggie, go ahead and you can start.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. You've got two things in front of you that have to do with the water rate increases. One is the PowerPoint, and one is an Excel spreadsheet that essentially shows what would happen to the water and sewer fund if this proposal was implemented. I want to start with a little history. Three years ago, the city council adopted water rate increases. And the last of those, it was a three-year plan. The last of those will take effect September 1st of 2008. The city's also been notified that the DuPage Water Commission is planning on raising its rates October 1st by 15 percent. And those increases will be the same for the following two years. So, I think it's safe to say that all the communities who purchase water from DuPage Water Commission are looking at their rates, and some, in fact, have gone ahead and just passed down an automatic 15 percent increase across the board to their users. This council, several members of this council asked the finance department to be a little more creative about increases in the rates, and also to look at various ways that we could actually encourage conservation on behalf of the residents. So, this proposal takes into account a lot of things that I've listened to over the last few years, both from residents and from the council, in terms of why are things done this way? And why couldn't we do it differently? And it is designed to take effect next May, which would be May of 2009. So, it would show up on, would first show up on the water sewer bills in July of 2009. So, this proposal gives you plenty of time to look at it and ask more questions. Obviously, everything I've put together, I've already provided to Brad so that if further changes needed to be made, he can do that. But I wanted to give you a little background about why we do this. You'll all recall that this is an enterprise fund. The fund is designed to be run like a business, which means the revenues that are generated should cover all of the necessary expenditures to run this water and sewer utility. And in Wooddale, not only are you providing water service, you're providing a wastewater treatment plant. Some communities and other counties don't have that burden on their utility bill because, for instance, in Cook County, they use the Metropolitan Sanitary District. And that district bills people on their real estate tax bills, not on their sewer bill. So, the sewer charges you see in some communities are much lower because essentially, people are just doing normal sewer maintenance. We're talking about the manhole covers and things like that. There's no treatment being done of the sewage. But in Wooddale, you operate two wastewater treatment plants. So, they tend to be expensive as well. And another point I'd like to make before we start is that it's always a good idea to think of the utility when you think of it as a business. It's not just buying the water or putting those sanitary sewer mains in the ground. It has a great deal to do with the personnel who have to maintain these systems and operate them. It has a lot to do with the costs of utilities because unlike the city, for instance, City Hall doesn't have to pay an electric bill. The water and sewer utility does have to pay an electric bill. It's a business. It's treated differently. So, it has all the ordinary and necessary business expenses any other business would have. And consequently, it has to have enough operating capital to take care of all the daily needs. It also has to have money put aside for capital projects. Not only water and sewer mains, but maintenance of the towers, the lift stations. All kinds of things that go into this utility that run, they either wear out or they need annual maintenance. So, those costs are considerably high, too. And as you all know, everything is going up, the cost of every commodity. I've put some assumptions into this proposal. I'll just go over them briefly because I know that these numbers are going to increase. We've got salaries that are going to go up 5 percent. That's what I've put in this. Cost of water, 15 percent annually. Gasoline increases by 10 percent. I've set the conservation level at 7,000 gallons. And I've come up with a different way to charge residents for sewer. charge residents for sewer. So, just so you know, that's all on the second page of this spreadsheet, if you want to refer to that. Right now, in Wooddale, people are paying $4.80 per 1,000 gallons of water, plus a $2 monthly fixed cost. And for sewer, they're paying $4.55 plus a $2.60 fixed cost. Beginning September 1st, this is already in the ordinances that have been passed, the rate for water will be $5.05 per 1,000 gallons, with a $2.25 fixed cost, and $4.70 for sewer, plus $2.70 fixed cost. Basically, the only other thing that goes into the water and sewer revenue is the rental for the cell phone towers and a little bit of investment income. But you've got the cost of water, utilities, personnel, commodities, and the fixed cost for the DuPage Water Commission. About a year ago, I think, we had a meeting where I was bringing the council up to date on the DuPage Water Commission meeting I attended, and at that time, we talked about how the city, as one of the members, the original member communities, was still paying off a portion of debt service on the transmission lines that were run when the commission was established, I believe that was 1993. So, that's about $125,000 a year, and Wooddale gets billed for that, just like all the member communities do. So, there's a lot that goes into this water and sewer utility in terms of costs, and the rates that the city charges are supposed to support those costs. This is an old slide we got from City Services that just shows the complexity of the water system, all the different things that are part of it. It's not just people turning on a faucet that's directly connected to DWC, a lot more to it than that. So, you can see that there are wellhouses, and there are booster pumps, all kinds of transmission lines, the water towers, all of that costs money. In addition, Wooddale is mandated by the DuPage Water Commission to maintain certain wells, which are no longer part of the water supply, the potable water supply in Wooddale, but are supposed to be available in case of an emergency. So, that costs money, too, and I believe we put something in the 2008-09 budget for pulling those wells and checking them. And of course, you never know when you pull a well, whether it needs minimal maintenance or whether it needs major maintenance. It could be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. So, that's part of Wooddale's contract with the DuPage Water Commission. Part of, the first part of the proposal, and probably the most important, is charging the lowest rate for water for people who use 7,000 gallons or less, and that means their rate would only go up 10%. And then I've come up with three additional tiers of usage. If you use 7,001 gallons up to 10,000, you'd have a 13% annual increase. Went from 10,001 to 20,000 gallons, a 15% increase, and anything over 20,001 gallons would be 18% increase. We took our new Springbrook software, and we were able to extract consumption data for pretty much the last 12 months, and found out that right now, about 37% of the people who are billed for water use $7,000, 7,000 gallons or less right now each month. 13% use between 7 and 10. And then the remaining 50% are those who are over 10,000. While I'm sure we do have some residential users that go over 10,000, most of those users over 10 are going to be commercial industrial. So, at least 50% are going to get the benefit of the lower-tiered rates, although everybody will get the same charge for 7,000 gallons. By that, I mean if somebody used 40,000 gallons, they would be charged that lower-tier rate for the first seven, then they would be charged the next tier between 7 and 10, then the tier after that between 10 and 20, and then finally, the highest charge. So, everybody would benefit to a certain extent from these rates, but the idea is to encourage consumption, I mean, I'm sorry, encourage conservation rather than consumption with the residents in Wooddale. And also mitigate the burden on our smaller households, where their usage could even be less than 7,000. While I'm thinking of it, we used to use as a rule of thumb that each person in a household would use 3,000 gallons of water. I've looked at a lot of websites that have to do with water conservation, including the EPA websites, and they're saying now it's really more like 2,500 to 2,700 gallons is adequate for daily showering, for dishwashing, for laundry, all those uses. So, 7,000 gallons would actually take care, or should take care of, a three-person household. If they, you know, if they weren't using water to excess, they would be at the 7,000. And the 7 to 10 would take care of at least another 13% of those households. The advantages to this proposal are that the seniors and smaller families would have the lowest rates applied to their water. The higher rates and the rate increases will apply to greater monthly consumption, but everybody does get the benefit of the lower-tier rates. Hopefully, this rate structure would encourage conservation, and it will cover the increases in the purchase of water from the DuPage Water Commission. Disadvantages are that, now I'll go to the spreadsheet for a second. You look at the bottom of the first page, you'll see in the year that ends April 30th of 2010, we would have income of 900, approximately $924,000. In earlier meetings, we've discussed the fact that the Water and Sewer Fund needs to spend about $1 million a year on water and sewer main replacements. So, this would not cover all of that. Last year, any water main and sewer main replacements were covered through the Capital Projects Fund. But again, I remind you, this is an enterprise fund. It should be able to pay for all of its expenses. So, using that Capital Projects money is just a stopgap. Really, the utility should pay for itself. Now, there are ways to manage that. We've talked about this when we talked about streets. You don't necessarily have to do a roadway program every year, a reconstruction of a roadway, nor do you have to replace water and sewer mains every year unless you've got a major failure. So, you could go to an every-other-year plan, conserve the monies that are being generated in this fund, and then have enough to do a project every other year. That's one way to look at it. What I was trying to do was, I didn't, I knew I couldn't create a miracle here, because the miracle would probably kill all the ratepayers. So, I had to come up with something that was rational, and that built on these increases, but kept them fairly steady, so that the fund would generate the monies that it needs, but it won't happen overnight. And I think you'll recall, if you were on this council three years ago, we had the same concerns, that we couldn't fix the problems of the past overnight. We needed to just take positive steps. So, that's what this does. So, for the moment, if there were something major that happened, you would probably still have to go to the Capital Projects Fund, utilizing that non-home rule sales tax to pay for a water main or a sewer main replacement. I've gone through these assumptions with you, but the last point is important. I came to you several times about the fact that we had grave concerns about why we were not billing out about 90% of what we were pumping in terms of water. We had a water leak study done. Not too many leaks were turned up. We went to the fire department and got information on how often they were exercising the hydrants, how much water was used for that process. We looked at our number of customers. We looked at the age of their meters. We started to try with our old software to pull out some consumption data and just look at it to see if it was sensible, and if it didn't seem sensible, we actually sent water people out to the premises to check the meter, check the reading devices, and do all that. And I'm happy to say that based on the efforts of Nicole Hoffman in the Finance Department, and Alfred Tenuto in City Services, we have gotten the percentage up to 88%, and we're aiming for 90. And I have to also tell you that at the time we began looking at this, some months, we were only billing out 69% of what we pumped. So, it's been so many different things. Customers who were deactivated for who knows what reason, addresses that were screwed up, reading devices that had stopped, all kinds of stuff. There were problems with the reading software. We know there were problems with our financial software. So, it's not over yet, but there's been very dramatic improvement, and we could see that when we extracted from our new software the consumption data, it began to look sensible. And you could compare usage month to month, where before, it was just, you know, the graph was up and down. So, that's the key, too. That's the part that the Finance Department and the Water Department have to focus on, that we always have good information about customers, and residents have to take some responsibility, too, when they move out. Get a final reading, give us the name of the new owners, so that we can do that smoothly. But great strides have been made, and those two individuals I mentioned have been at this, you just can't imagine the hundreds of hours they've spent getting this done, and it's beginning to pay off. Here's how this would look. If you go to the third column, that's the first tier. September 1st of 2008, that $5.05 has already been passed, that's in the ordinance. September 1st of 2000, or May 1st of 2009, you would go to $5.56. That, again, this is for the 7,000 gallons or less. On May 1st of 2010, it would go to 611. On May 1st of 2011, to 672, and on May 1st of 2012, $7.39. If you go across, you'll just see how those tiers change, and earlier on in the presentation, there was a slide that showed you what the increases were. The fourth tier is the one that goes up 15%, the other ones go up slightly less. So, I think this is probably easier for people in terms of being able to adjust to the changes. And you see that, for instance, in the year 2009, 2010, a person using 7,000 gallons or less is only going to pay $5.56. And in the second tier, that 7,000 to 10,000 gallons, they'll pay 5.71. But the people who are in the fourth tier, the 20,000 gallons or more, are paying $5.96, so that's a full 40 cents difference per 1,000 gallons. And it just goes through that way. As I said, if the council wanted to recommend any changes, then Brad can recalculate that. All the spreadsheets have been set up to use the same formula, we just changed the beginning number. But this one, this seems to encourage the conservation, give people a break if they're willing to use 7,000 gallons or less, or even if they're stuck using 10,000 due to the size of their family, and push the higher users into the system into paying a bit more. Now, the sewer rate is a whole different animal. Wooddale charges sewer based on water used. We've talked about this at several meetings, the fact that there are certain properties in Wooddale that have some kind of irrigation system, but they can't have a separate irrigation meter due to the way the plumbing was set up on their property. So, those people who end up, when we had a drought two years ago, when people were watering just to keep their trees and their bushes alive, we had a lot of people who were complaining about their high sewer bill, and we had to explain to them, well, it's because of your water usage. And their response was always the same, well, the water doesn't go into the sewer. So, what I'm recommending here is that we, for residential customers only, charge them a flat rate for sewer and don't base it on usage. Now, this would mean that even a property where people weren't using water would still be charged the monthly sewer rate. They'd just be charged, you know, people who go away for the winter, whatever, they'd still be charged for sewer, but they wouldn't be charged for water if they weren't using any water. The two would be disconnected for residential only. And we've always had variable rates for light industrial and food service sewer rates, because they do place a greater burden on the wastewater treatment facility, but I've changed that a little bit, too, so that the increases yield what we need to have in the sewer fund in terms of revenue. Okay, I think I've just said that, and the commercial are going to pay more. So, here's how this works. For a person who uses water or doesn't use water, beginning May 1st of 2009, their monthly sewer bill would be $53.21. If this was a light industrial user, they would be paying, based on their water usage, and they would be paying $7.82 per 1,000 gallons. And you go across, their food service is a little bit higher, they put a greater burden on. There'd be also an additional flat rate, which we've always had on sewer, and that would continue for the light industrial and the food service. Again, there's increases every year up through 2013. To make a comparison, on September 1st, if a family used 10,000 gallons of water, their water and sewer bill combined is $102.45. So, that's a 5.5% increase over their bill today with the same usage. On May 1st of 2009, that same 10,000 gallons would cost $111.60, that's a 9% increase. And on May 1st of 2010, that same 10,000 would cost $121.05, again, another 9% increase. So, it smooths things out a little bit from the standpoint of the residential user. And I think it's probably more easily understood, it will definitely be more easy to monitor this and to explain things to people, because, as I said, once we had people using irrigation where they didn't have an irrigation meter, they had astronomical sewer bills when no sewer was used at all for those bills. So, it didn't make a whole lot of sense. And this is not unusual. Many communities have flat rates. In fact, many communities have minimum water and minimum sewer rates, and you get charged if you're currently occupying the property, you pay it. Doesn't matter if you use anything, you just pay it. So, that's why we try to divorce this from water usage when it comes to residential only. I think this is a slide I resurrected from our last water sewer rate increase. And at the time, of course, you remember, the Water Sewer Fund had a deficit every year, didn't have any money at all. So, if you don't stay with this in terms of getting your rates up, keeping your rates current and competitive in terms of covering your expenses, you end up with increasing deficits, you end up with a system you can't properly maintain, and you could actually have a system failure. Even though there is the non-home rule sales tax, and it does go in the Capital Projects Fund, it has been used for water sewer main replacements last year, and maybe used this year. I don't recall offhand if we had a major roadway reconstruction this year, but there may be something in there. But that fund really is designed for infrastructure that's more for governmental uses as opposed to utility uses. So, you don't want to keep relying on that Capital Projects Fund to replace water and sewer mains. And there's always going to be a public backlash if utilities aren't maintained, and new councils sit here and it wasn't done. The people who were in office at the time where action could have been taken are always the ones that get blamed. I mean, that's just life. People rarely remember the good things, but boy, they know who to come after when there's a problem. So, everybody, all governments are dealing with this now. Everybody's struggling with, how do we afford what needs to be done? And all you can do is analyze it, do your best to come up with a plan, and then take action. At least this way, this plan would take you up to 2013. You could put it in place the way the last increases were done, through ordinance, one debate, one vote, one decision, and it's finished for three years. And the only thing that could change that is if something extraordinary happened, you know, like DWC decides not to charge for water anymore, or starts giving big rebates again. You never know. Things could happen. You can always go back and reduce it, but it's important to have it in place. This is a planning tool, too, just like our budgets that take us out further than one year. The point is to see, here's where we are, here's where we think we're going to be in 12 months, and here's where we need to be three years down the road. If you don't plan that way, then it's all shooting from the hip. It doesn't make good sense. And this council... And, and this council has shown that they surely know how to look at a budget and look ahead and plan ahead, and that's what really the purpose of this proposal is. Now, you wouldn't have to enact this right away, because it wouldn't go into effect till May 1st, but it would be a good idea to get this passed probably sometime in the fall, so that when you go to start your budget planning, this is in place, and those numbers can be used then for budget. As I said, the numbers that I used in this projection on the spreadsheet, I've given you the assumptions, I've taken these rates that I've...